I call this meeting to order. Thank you for coming. It's nice to see everybody kind of wrapped up a little bit today. It's a little cooler than what I was expecting, too. It's always nice to see your faces and I want you to know that I sincerely mean that. Anytime that we can sit down together, even if we're not breaking bread, it might be easier if we wouldn't break your bread. It's really nice because I think sharing our ideas and our thoughts certainly leave us with avenues that we can pursue, different things that are going to be beneficial for our students and our staff. Today, we have two items on the agenda and I think they're important items and we will give as much attention as we need, but I believe this will be a fairly short meeting. And if anything else comes up, we have time to discuss that as well. Dr. Collins is going to introduce, talk about the policy revision 3420. I don't have my glasses on, I think that's 3420. And some of the other policies that go with it. I want to give you just a little bit of quick history about this. Sometimes the state makes wise decisions and they put them in place. We piloted the graduation project or senior project, however you want to address it, for about 30 years. And Mr. Wiggins was responsible for doing that. I don't know if it's been, it has been about 30 years, hasn't it? And the parameters of that project were put in place and worked well. But somewhere along the line, we kind of slipped up and we let those parameters maybe not be as strong and rigorous as they should, but we continued that without doing any kind of modification. It's time for us to look at the handwriting on the wall from the state and know that the state, of course, is getting involved in curriculum issues that probably they need to stay out of and let not only boards of educations, but communities get involved in what is best for their community instead of what is best for the state. With that being said, I hope everyone understands that this is not coming forward because we don't believe in rigor and we do believe in challenging our kids. And every one of our students who did the projects in the past did them according to their abilities. Some of those abilities were not, were quite challenged, but they did present a project. And those that had the abilities didn't do as well as they should have on some, but everybody did the project according to the parameters. They just didn't do them as well as they should have. But they were beneficial, students learned a lot, I learned a lot, and I'm sure anybody else who worked with those projects did as well. So Barry, I hope I haven't stolen any of your thunder, but I appreciate you bringing this up and talking with your staff and the floor is yours.
Yes ma'am. Madam Chair, members of the board, we've been talking about this for several weeks. The staff recommendation that you had before you should be in your packet. The two policies that we're looking at is policy 3420 and sections in 3420 and also sections in Ozawa County School Board Policy 3460 that's in your packet. Your approval of this recommendation would eliminate the current graduation project as a requirement for graduation effective immediately. Senior students who choose to complete their project this year would receive recognition for their accomplishment in the form of an honor cord to be worn during the graduation ceremonies. As an educator and superintendent of this school district, I want to make clear that this recommendation is in no way removes our belief in academic rigor and relevance that will be accomplished in existing high school course loads. I have listened and I support, as I know you do, our teachers and administrators. Therefore, at this time, I recommend the following strikeouts as presented to you in policy 3420 and 3460. Madam Chair, that is my recommendation.
Do you want to look at that policy for a while before we have a motion, then we'll open it up for discussion? Do you want to take a second to look? I'm sure most of you have looked at it. If so, is there a motion to remove policy 3460's graduation requirement as didacted from our policy?
Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we approve the superintendent's recommendations for policies 3420 and 3460, which would remove the graduation requirement from the graduation project.
Second.
Okay, discussion and comments.
Madam Chair, as most of you know, I am a proponent of the so-called graduation project, or senior project, but I also realize that things change. The plate is not getting any less full for teachers and principals. I do believe that we are missing an opportunity to really make the graduation project a meaningful culmination experience for children. I do believe that we're missing that opportunity. I do feel confident, though, with the assurance of Dr. Collins and staff that we will address those kinds of things that children got to experience in the graduation project. Many of you have probably judged graduation projects. I've judged hundreds of them and it was really something that I really, really enjoyed. And I do believe that maybe some schools might have been more successful than others on an overall basis, but I think everybody did the very best they could considering what it takes to pull that off. It takes a lot of staff, it takes a lot of time, it takes community members who are willing to step up and judge. And, you know, we are, we say we are a system that cares about kids and that we believe in rigor, that we believe in parent involvement and community involvement. And I'm hoping that will be accomplished in another way in the classes that have their rigor. Every class should have rigor, whether it's English 1, 2, 3, and 4, or whether it's the very social studies classes. I think the components of the graduation project can be embedded in just about every course. I think research is certainly important. I believe that writing occurs in every class. I think writing occurs in math. Obviously, it does in English classes. So as long as we are encouraging that kind of rigor when it comes to writing, research, presentation skills, I would, I feel good about it, even though I still believe that the event known as the graduation project was a, was a good thing, and it is a good thing. But I'm at peace. I've had to just come to grips with things change. And I support our superintendent and I support staff and I support the principals of Ozawa County.
Madam Chair, I believe that Mr. Reddick has a lot of good points on that. I do believe that we need to ensure that our kids graduate with the skills that they're going to need in order to go forward in life. I also believe, though, that the graduation project over the term that I've been on here, I've received numerous complaints from a lot of parents and a lot of the public with regards to the project, not so much because it puts an undue burden on the student, but because it puts an undue burden on the entire system sometimes. Unfortunately, the state has imposed a lot of requirements that we have to follow that we probably didn't have 30 years ago. And there is so much out there right now. I think the system is overloaded with requirements. If we could cut the testing, if we could cut a lot of that stuff back. I do wish, though, that our program, as it goes forward, has something in there that teaches the kids those life skills that they're going to need to go forward and become successful members of the community, good citizens. I believe that public speaking, good writing skills, all of those things, research skills in particular, being able to go out and find information, put it together in a cogent manner, and be able to present it to someone. You're going to need those things whether you're going out there to interview as a job as a plumber, or if you're going to become a physics, you know, instructor at some point. You're always going to need those life skills. So I think it's important that we do inculcate into the system whatever we're going to have removed from here, that we're able to pull it into the other courses material.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I appreciate that.
I wasn't going to say anything, but I need to do this for the staff members and the folks at White Oak High School. We did pilot that program and it was very successful immediately. And then all the high schools became involved. That's personal. Now professionally, we just looked at it as another learning opportunity for our students. And I feel that it was our responsibility then and it's our responsibility now. And I'll support your recommendations, but we've missed a golden opportunity. You know, we talk about the poorest way to learn in a classroom is for the teacher or the professor or whoever to stand up there, lecture, 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 lecture. It's the same way with learning processes, guys and gals. There are other ways. This was another way. And it was very successful. We talked about complaints. All the years we did it at White Oak High School, I had one parent, one complaint. And I'm going to say this, the young fellow whose mom complained, he's the very young fellow that I would take my tie off in the afternoon and go get in the gym because of being a former wrestler, he was a wrestler, and I would get down to the mess and wrestle with him. And he said to me, "Mr. Wiggins, I'll do that project. It's not me, it's my mom." But you have a process. Kids chose their project. We didn't choose it. They had an opportunity to be creative. They had an opportunity to research. They had an opportunity to read. They had an opportunity to write. They had an opportunity to prepare a presentation. They had an opportunity to present and be a speaker. We were preparing them for their life. That is our responsibility, as a parent, as a grandparent, as a board member. And I'm not preaching, I'm just, I'm passionate about it. Whether we were preparing them for college life when they go off to college, they're going to have to write that research paper, many of them. Just as my experience, I was tired of writing research papers. That's why I decided not to be an English major and be a math major. And the very next semester, I had history of math and guess what was assigned? Research paper. But we were also preparing them for things that are in their public life, guys, when they get out, whether it's speaking at their church, speaking on their job, preparing, all of that. I just feel like this was a, the best way to learn is hands-on. You know that in science labs. This was a hands-on project for these kids. And the teachers that were involved, that's who I could not be more proud of the time that they put into this. And I'll say this and I'll hush. Here was an avenue that was not in the math book, or not in the social studies book, or in the science. It was a different opportunity to learn, a golden opportunity. I'm just amazed where it is now, where it is now. We all look around as parents and doing what we do and we talk about rigor, we talk about rigor, we talk about rigor, until it comes to our doorstep. And then it's too tough for our little Johnny or our little Susie. And I'm tired of that. If you want success, as I read on the side of that bus out at Beirut the other day, the Beirut Memorial Dedication, you earn it. It's not given to you. And I just feel like with the graduation project, it's just like your flowers at home, the ones that I have to do for my wife Debbie. If you want to kill it, stop watering it. Somewhere along the line, we stopped watering it. But the many kids who came back and said to me, "Mr. Williams, I'm so glad you forced us to do that." Sometimes we have to make decisions. It's not like when particular parents would come to my office at White Oak High School and I would be recommending they take this course, take this course, and explain to them why. And after 15 or 20 minutes, I'll pick on CJ. CJ, the mom, would turn and look to their daughter, son, and wonder, "Honey, what do you want to do?" Sometimes we have to step up and say, "You're going to take that course. You're going to do this." And that's our responsibility. And I'll say this and I'll hush. I just thank the many teachers who put their heart and soul into that project and the many kids who did it. And it didn't matter whether they were, and there was a story here, guys. Many of them chose, maybe they were thinking about being a lawyer, so they would choose a project because of, was one of the lawyers, and I tried to keep them out of the lawyer department, or veterinarian, or electrical, masonry. They chose those projects and they researched. And they found out sort of, and others would come back and say, "You know, I'm glad I did that because now I know I don't want to do that. That's not my career path." But the community that was involved, we talk about keeping our business people involved. They were in those offices, they were in those working fields with those people. It was a great opportunity for our business and our public, too. And Mr. Thomas, you made opening statements to this and I'll say this, shame on the General Assembly, those folks that voted that way. They probably haven't been in a classroom in 20 or 30 years. They don't get it. But shame on them for making decisions. I think they might need to be more in tune with maybe passing the budget or a few other things and get out of our business and let us take care of kids. I'll hush.
Members of the board, I have made my living my whole career by researching, writing, talking, presenting. John Smith said I could tuck something up a tree and maybe I can, but I don't want to ever diminish the necessity of people being able to use those skills in their daily lives, no matter what they do. As far as the graduation project, I think I summarized everything that I would have to say on it in my October 21st memo to this board. Madam Chair, thank you for having the meeting this morning and allowing us to discuss it openly and talk about it. I thank you, Superintendent, for recognizing kids that have worked hard on that. I think it's appropriate that we recognize their efforts and accord at graduation is commendable. I think that's a good idea. Thank you. Last thing I would say is I do believe that rigor is necessary and I want to thank the Department of Instruction for such things as our AP Capstone courses and what we're doing in English 4 and those researching and writing projects that we can incorporate into our regular curriculum. Thank you for that. Also, it's been brought to my attention recently how very important it is for us to have dual enrollment and for us to be able to allow, you know, kids, which this can be done at no expense to their family, to dual enroll at Coastal Carolina Community College and at the high school where they will get experience with those research papers, Mr. Wiggins. And I just really appreciate the relationship we have with Coastal Carolina Community College and our ability to let kids have that experience while they're still in high school as well. So I commend you for incorporating other ways to have some kind of culminating project that would involve research and presentation into our curriculum. I think that our staff is doing a great job with a changing landscape of education. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, ditto to everything that's been said. I support that and agree with all of you. As Madam Chair stated at the beginning, there's sort of a history to this process and I remember pretty much from the beginning when former Deputy Superintendent Freddie Kennedy sent me to Charlotte to go observe this program called Senior Project, Charlotte Muck, back in the mid-'90s. And from that point, it just grew and grew by every school system across the country that state was adopting it. And all of a sudden, the General Assembly, "Gosh, this is so good, let's require it for everybody." And they stopped and said, "No, can't do that anymore, but let's make it a local option." They came through it because one size doesn't fit all. My concern, I support the House Bill 2377 to reduce testing. We've been harping on that for decades. Thank goodness we're hoping to get some relief, but hopefully educators will have some input, have had some input. The concern now is mandating that no school system can do this, can require a graduation project. What else is next? On one hand, we talk about control at the local level. We want this, we want that, at the state level and the federal level. However, now they want to come in, control what is best for our kids, like we don't know what's best for our kids. That concerns me more than anything. I remember a brutal letter to all of our legislators and Representative Shepard said that comments being made on the floor at that time was that kids were missing classes. The complaint was kids were missing classes to work on their senior project. I don't think that's true. And then it cost the average $75 a student. I don't believe that's true, what I have seen in my observations. I hope this decision that we make today is not perceived as that we are lowering standards. We're not, because I know our people, I know our teachers and principals, but the people may perceive this that we're trying to lower our standards. No, I'll put our kids up against anybody. I think we're all, as seniors, remember that disease called senoritis. You know, last year in high school was supposed to be a cakewalk. And if you didn't have it, you're not being truthful, because I have it. I was supposed to lay back my last year and just kind of coast. It's called a cakewalk. Hopefully, in our teachings to our kids, that they need to understand that there's no such thing as a cakewalk in life. You graduate and you hit the road and you're running. What I did learn, and we talked about research, presentation skills, in my observations and even asking the kids about, "What are your thoughts about the project?" I hate it. I hate it. But I did learn something. And this is coming from the kids. I learned not to procrastinate. I learned a lot about time management. If they have learned that, they've got something to, that will help them in life, no matter what they do. What I have heard since retiring in my work at the Community College as an adjunct, which is a high-level term for part-temper, and I ask the kids, "I wish I had," now fill in the blank, "I wish I had taken my high school years more seriously. I wish I had studied more." These are, that's coming from kids who have made that transition. So if we do anything less, we are doing a disservice to our kids. I don't care if you're a Bluebird, Redbird, as Mr. Wiggins used to call us, or call the kids, if you're doing anything less for all kids, you're doing a disservice to the students, to your children. So our job is to educate students, is maximize their potential while we've got it, because they get a one shot at a K-12 education. I support Dr. Collins, I support the staff. I've been a proponent of this because our teachers and principals came to us years ago. This is good for all kids. But I do understand things change. But we've got other things out there that can accomplish the same thing and I'm okay with that, because I have the trust and faith of our principals and our teachers who are going to maintain that excellence in education that we keep preaching every day. I believe that with all my heart. And I appreciate you, the staff, and everyone bringing this to our attention. I just don't like, dislike it, another mandate, someone else deciding what is best for everybody because of a personal experience with their child. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me add one thing to what Mr. Taylor's saying. As board members, you probably will be put in this situation. I would have children who, students, who would get a letter that they were on a waiting list out of Carolina or State or none of East Carolina. But is there anything you can do, Mr. Wiggins? Well, I would call the Dean of Admissions. I did it many, many times and ask, "Why are they on the waiting list?" And here, this is really important. Said, "Mr. Wiggins, we were looking at all the transcripts and this student stayed in class the senior year and took some extra tough courses. This student, yours, took early release." So they looked at that senior slacking off. They don't want a slacker offer. They want the guy who's pushing. So that's important when you talk to parents and to kids, to seniors. Be sure you stay in those classes your senior year. That is the difference in accepted or a letter of on the waiting list. Really important.
Dr. Fodger, I know you have some sticky notes there, so I'm assuming there's some talking points. I'd like to give you an opportunity if you want to say anything.
I just want to say thank you to the board for hearing what our teachers, our principals' concerns are, but also being adamant about maintaining rigor and relevance in the work that we do. We, it is our goal, it is our moral and ethic responsibility, ethical responsibility to make sure that we graduate our seniors future-ready. And we can't create a void. Just because we don't have the graduation project doesn't mean that we can create a void of those opportunities. We have some things in place, so I'm looking at this as, it's a, the process is what we want the students to learn from. So maybe the product was a graduation product, project, but now we have to make sure that the process of the writing, the research, the presentation is all taught through other processes in our schools. We have an opportunity. We have an opportunity to make this something even better, where one project doesn't fit all. I think that's where we were beginning to get pushed back, is that this was one project with parameters around it and students were going in multiple avenues. So we have now opportunities for the AP Capstone, we have the IB diploma, we have college and career promise dual enrollment courses, we have the CTE advanced studies where students are doing these types of life learning, the Skill Center now with new pathways and internships and apprenticeships attached to those. And beginning next fall, we have the CCRG, which is the College and Career Readiness Graduate Legislation that comes into play, another mandate, but that ensures that students who are in that little bit of gray area, 2.7 through 2.9, will have the opportunity to take the English and math courses that make, ensure that they're ready for college while they're still in high school. So I see this as a challenge. I do think it's a change, but I am an avid supporter of rigor and it's something that we talk about. we talk about daily, daily. And we do walkthroughs in classrooms and principal meetings. If I had a dollar for every time we talked about rigor and relevance, I'd be a wealthy woman. I might be able to retire right now. But I hear what the board is saying, and we take that very seriously. And then move forward with your wishes to make sure that this is an integral part of our students' learning.
Dr. Collins, Dr. Folger, I would hope that the board would be interested, I believe, in knowing how many students choose to continue their project to get recognition and have that on their transcript. And I think it would be important, it's important to me to know that they are continuing something that they started, even though it's not required. Well, we'll know if it's required. We're going to vote on this in just a minute. Any other questions or comments? Well said. Go back and look at the tape. You'll hear the commonality among us that was said, and I think that's good. We have a motion by Mr. Hudson, a second by Mr. Williams. All of us have had a chance to speak. So all in favor of, Mr. Hudson, you want to repeat your motion?
Sure. I move that we accept staff's recommendations for modifications to Policy Code 3420 and 3460, which would remove the graduation requirement component of the graduation project. And if I may add, and do we need to add any recognition for those that have already begun? Or is that a super?
We do that.
That's within SAS purges.
Yeah, we do that.
Okay. In that case, then I'll end the motion that we remove the graduation requirement of the graduation project as proposed by staff in these recommended changes to 3420 and 3460.
Okay. Bob, you still agree that that's what you said?
I still agree to that.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you.
I didn't get to vote. I voted. May I say something? You understand my passion.
Well, I thought you did get to vote.
Well, I didn't. I didn't say anything. I was still thinking. But I want you to know that I have total confidence in what you folks are doing and where you will lead us. My vote is yes. Okay.
Motion passed. Thank you. Next is just a little brief of meeting that we had on Oslo County Schools Funding Discussion, and Jeff and Barry certainly could need to chip in, anything they feel they need to. But you know, last year, the board gave a directive to Vice Chair Wiggins, the head of, Chair of the Finance Committee, and myself, as well as any staff that we wanted to work with commissioners and a team from their department, to see what we could do with financing. So we met the other day, and y'all, I don't even care that we're on camera, I want to say this. It was just a very pleasant, pleasant meeting. It was like a burden had been lifted from the discussions. And I don't know, I think the others will say that, it was. And we got, we're going to move forward. But I wanted to keep you aligned with what we're doing, and certainly will continue to share. We met with Chairman Bright, Paul Buchanan, Mark Price, their finance guy was there, and of course, their interim. I won't still, instead of saying interim, I'm just going to say she's the county manager now, because that's what she is, Russell. And they had a lot of good dialogue with us. And we found out some things we didn't know, Jeff probably is the only one who would know, but about revenue sources and lack of revenue sources. Also, with us was myself, Mr. Wiggins, Earl, Dr. Collins, and our nickel puncher over there, Jeff. But it was a great meeting. We set out a framework and a process for what we need to do to move forward. We agreed on some key statements that dealt with not our funding needs, as well as addressing our current expense fund and our capital outlay fund. And then a great need for long-range planning and sustaining that. We didn't throw out anything about the formulas, because we know in part of the process, something's got to be based on something. We're meeting, Barry is meeting with Sharon periodically, and they are coming together pretty soon, I think.
Next Tuesday.
And then we will be meeting, that little group will be meeting again, and I'll share with you what we do at that meeting, but it's to lay out some kind of agreements. Jeff, you may want to address comments that we discussed that day, if you'd like.
Sure. It was a very productive meeting. Everyone was really eager to work together, to come up with a plan, something that will work for both the county and the school system, and thought it was a great opening. And then the peers asked staff to work for them together collaboratively to develop a plan, and I'm hopeful that we'll be able to move forward with that process.
The goal is, we will meet on the 22nd, I believe? 21st or 22nd? 21st. And we're hoping that the team that's there, the finance team, it will have all of that solidified by January, so that we can come back to this board with some options. And that's what we're looking forward to. If you have any questions, I want you to feel free to ask them. Mr. Bright and I discussed the finance committee that we both had appointed, and at this time, we feel like dissolving that will not be a detriment to what we're planning to do with this other committee. So at this time, I thank those people who've served, and that was Ken and Bob and Earl. And I know that they met with our staff and with some of their staff before, I think on the commissioner's, their committee. So he will be sharing that information with his team, and I'm sharing that with mine as well. And we appreciate that. Doesn't mean that you weren't appreciated, because whatever you did came back to us via Mr. Taylor in this instance. And anytime you have any comments or questions, or I hope good ideas, that you share them, because that's what we need, is to talk to one another. So I look forward to continuing that. Do you have any questions you'd like to ask of Barry, or myself, or any of the team?
I'd like to ask a couple of quick questions. I know it was a preliminary meeting, you're going to meet again on the 21st of November, is that correct? And staff is meeting in the interim to try to work out some parameters. What basis are we looking at? I mean, we've got a whole gamut of things that we have discussed. I was part of the finance committee before, and frankly, although we discuss things, there was some heels dug in on both sides of the fence. How are we, how are we going to breach those issues?
Well, I think that just the discussion that we've had, just like we had before, they're going to come down to what kind of process is going to be in place. We don't want to wait like we had to do, and that's what you're referring to, Bob, and I agree with that. I think there's going to be some type of, I don't want to call it a formula, but a process that we will follow. Jeff, may I speak with that?
Yeah, the first step in this is making sure that we both fully understand the viewpoint from the county and the school system, so that we know what constraints each is up against and what the needs are, so that we can try to find a way that we can blend together an approach that will fit the needs of both entities. Because it's all about one community, the Oslo County. And we're certainly more focused on a simpler segment here with our students, but we all serve all the citizens of Oslo County. So we're trying to find, first of all, what are the key needs from both perspectives, and finding a way to pull those together to best serve the community. So that's where we're at, we're in that kind of discovery stage, working through that to even see what the opportunities and possibilities are. Recall, the previous meetings, we were pretty thorough on our side on laying out needs and concerns and all that. But they just kind of took that in. At that time, there wasn't a great deal of information coming back in those meetings. So I'm hopeful that as we go through this process, we'll get a little deeper understanding of their needs, as well as their capacities, so that we can collaboratively think through solutions that will work for all of us.
One of the concerns I've had for many, many months now is deferred maintenance. And deferred maintenance has to be a part of any deal that we work out in a long-term program, in order to bring that into what our needs are. So that certainly has to be part of it.
They mentioned that themselves, that they see there's a need. And we did mention, you know, the hurricane provided us a different opportunity to get some of that maintenance done. We don't want a hurricane to come to be the main reason that we get it done. And we kind of all understood that from their side, too, you know, with their buildings. They did point out, they, I think they would like, or some of their commissioners, would like for us to look at a percentage of revenue being, you know, allocated to us. Now, what that looks like monetarily, we don't know. That's a discussion that we'll have. And then we found out, you know, that we lose, Jeff, you probably know this, Jeff Hudson, we found out that we lose about $3.5 million from a government law that allows our military, who have registered vehicles, trailers, and
Motorcycle.
Motorcycles and boats. That is a lot of money. I didn't know that.
It's free.
And he said, of course, there are a lot of people who don't take advantage of it, but there are an awful lot that do. Those are some of the revenue streams that just changing a law would help us. So I'm hoping that we, all of us, have an opportunity to talk with Greg Murphy. I want him, I would like for him to volunteer to say, hey, I want to be on that Impact Aid, what is it called, NAF, yeah, the Coalition. Alex on there, aren't you? Aren't you still on there? You're not?
He's on the middle.
You're on the military side. But I think that he would be ideal. He doesn't know a lot about the impact that he's heard us complain about it, and it's not a great deal of money. But hopefully, if he could get on that committee, he might could make some of these changes that would benefit our county. So we're looking at things like that. If you have an opportunity to speak to Greg Murphy, that'd be a good point to mention to him.
Madam Chair, along with one, is looking at additional resources that we or the county could obtain to help address this issue. As y'all all know, we have worked very, very hard with state leadership to try to push forward the optional quarter cent sales tax. Both this board and the Board of County Commissioners have now definitely approved a resolution and supported that. I think we were told in this previous meeting that a quarter cent sales tax option would bring in additional $5.6 million a year, and that would go a long ways towards addressing these capital needs. And that's why we put so much emphasis on trying to get that through. That is something that this community could really, really use, if we could just get the state to allow us the option to put it before the books.
And I agree with that. One of the major things that I'm concerned about is the ability of funding capacity within the county itself. Funding capacity is the ability to raise the funds in order to pay for our projects that we've got going. Recently, we had to defer one of our schools based on the lack of funding capacity. And then shortly thereafter, the county came up with a new program involving funding capacity that they said that they would be able to build a multimillion-dollar facility without having to raise taxes. It has been, and continues to be, my concern, that the perception of the public is that every time that we need to build schools, we need to raise taxes, but every time we need to build county facilities, we don't need to raise taxes.
Well, the good news is, enough that came out of this meeting, is that they do have the capacity to build that school. They're going to the LGC in February. And what that's going to help us with is building the road out of construction money instead of us having to pay for it upfront and get reimbursed two years later. They're doing that under the directive of the new county manager, or interim county manager. So that's good news. It still will be a little bit behind time. We won't start where we should, but we don't think.
That is good news.
It was. In the meeting, there was a really, a good feeling of positive communication. It came out Barry and Mrs. Russell will meet on a regular basis, Jeff and their finance officer will meet on a, we're not waiting, they're going to be meeting all along, which is great. I think it was very positive. Their words were, there's a new day, and I, whatever that meant.
Well, we also, we also talked about good times
Yes.
and some times that are not going to be so good. How are we going to work together during those times? And I think the message was, we're going to work and do what we have to do. You know, we always, and I know Jeff wants to speak, so I'll let him. We always look for what our needs are, and we ask for a certain amount of money. We didn't get what we asked for, but we're working with what we got. And I think it's important for us to share with the county how we're using that money. You know, we don't usually give reports to them, and that's one of the things I'm going to mention on the 21st, is I think that we, as a board, should have our staff, Barry, to go before the commissioners and say, look, these are the capital projects we've done with the funding you gave us so far. I think that's important, because sometimes they have acted like and maybe not, not know at all what we've been doing. So it holds us both accountable. So that's one of the things that I have on my, that I, my note for on the 21st. Jeff, I know you.
Oh, yeah. I was just going back to Mr. Williams a moment ago about some of the capacity issues with building, and bring up a good point there that everyone needs to understand, as older projects roll off because they have been completely paid back, there's that capacity there that is not being applied to anything, you know, at that time that could be used towards school projects. And so I just wanted to reiterate what you were saying there about, we need to look at that in the big picture of things, of how that can impact addressing issues and needs we have by looking at when those projects are rolling off and asking them to put that capacity towards school programs.
With the school that we're talking about, the second school that's going to be put off till February, is that tied to the other project that the county is also going to be doing, a rebundling?
No, the only thing that was in that was the, in the 51 man, was the
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter and the safety.
The two schools and animal shelter were in that original package. They're moving forward with the New Southern Elementary Project and the Animal Shelter Project, but the West Central School was simply delayed until we get the county's prison.
Y'all might be interested to know that they have looked at our building plan, you know, and they think that we need to go ahead and look at land and consider what we're going to do as this third, a third school as we move forward. So that's something that would be on our plate pretty soon to discuss, I think. Or you want to say anything about it?
Just briefly, again, it was a very cordial meeting and sitting across, not against each other, but intermingled with each board. What I heard from Ms. Russell at the beginning was that the need to develop trust between the two boards, extremely important. And I also heard her say that we sort of need to begin singing off the same page of music. But it's a shared vision and a shared plan, and that's extremely important. They do recognize They do recognize the need to, to expand Northwoods Park, they recognize the need for the new school, they know they were growing, everything that you just mentioned, I, I think was touched on in our meeting and will be discussed further. The, the formation of our two committees back in January, I think, opened up some doors that had been shut for a long time. Although Hurricane force was providing so much devastation, it did make both bodies realize, governing bodies realize that this is our community.
Yeah, we need to work together.
We need to work together. So I, I see building of relationships, which is extremely important, respecting each other, and just laying it on the table, this is what we have and work within those parameters. But I'm very glad that both our staff and their staffs are highly competent, will work together to, hopefully, once all is said and done, we may have another agreement, because you just can't plan for year to year, like during the old days, you've got the plan five and 10 years, oh, these kids are coming. I think we all know that, thank you.
It was also mentioned too, that whatever process we use, whatever formula, if you want to call it that, we do need to have some type of, we need to go back every year and look at what we can do to amend it if we need to in some way, and that was kind of seemed acceptable to all of us, and of course, it comes back to y'all, as a, us as a board, as well as to the commissioners, so I look forward to it. But share any ideas you have, because they, we need them. Barry, you have two?
Not anything that hadn't already been said, other than the biggest takeaway for me, having, having new leadership on both sides, fairly new to this position, and she certainly is really new to her position, Ms. Russell. I think coming away from that and the, the ability for us to begin those conversations, and we've got several meetings set up in the next two weeks, the, the three components, being the purpose fans, the capital outlay, and the new construction. And we, we do know that already, that our philosophies are a little bit different, but we also know that we want some type of blended, blend those philosophies into something that is both sustainable, but also provides for our needs, so those things we're root on. So we, we are very optimistic as we move forward.
Anybody have anything else they'd like to share? A grandbaby picture you need to show? Steve was funny a while ago, he had a picture of his grandchild, and he had put a mustache on it, and I said, well, his head looks just like yours.
They're not going to let him keep that one.
Motion to adjourn?
Same move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
This means adjourn, y'all have a great weekend.